Thanks so much for being here tonight. My name is Bob McBride, Superintendent of Lockport Township High School District 205. It's great to see everybody here and it's really amazing. So many of our board meetings, our board meetings actually take place, the business part, takes place behind us in the porter room. But we have had so many students who have done so many amazing things. I'm trying to remember the last time that we started an actual board meeting in the porter room. Now, I also want to extend an invitation to every single one of you. If you're interested in bus bids, our annual communication report, come on down, come on into the porter room, we'd love to have you. But generally after we do these resolutions, there's no obligation on your part to be part of the rest of the Board of Education meeting. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to our board president, Ann Lopez Caniva. And this is our school board, so that she can properly open up the meeting. The board does have to reconvene into public session, and then we can do these resolutions. And one of the things that I like to point out is, is why are we doing this as a community? Really, everybody here could be doing something else. Our board could be starting its meeting and maybe giving itself a little, you know, 20, 30 minutes less time in a public meeting. All of you could be doing things that give you pleasure or at home purposely doing other things, sports, recreation, or just relaxing after a long day. I think the reason why that we're doing this is so often when people accomplish great things, the easiest thing that you can do is have that accomplishment and then just keep rolling, just, just keep going. And there's such an important thing as a community, as a group of human beings, as, as people, to literally take the time to memorialize excellence. Everyone here tonight who will be called out and have a resolution read has achieved excellence. Sometimes we ho-hum that, but they are in rare air in the state of Illinois. Because Illinois is such a competitive state, they're in rare air in the country. And a lot of people who you'll see tonight, they don't think of themselves that way. They're achievers and accomplishers because they're hard workers and they're humble and they didn't wrestle, they didn't teach so that they could shake the superintendent in the board president's hand or get a fancy resolution made about them. So they're all the more deserving tonight. And as a community, we're just here to say this simple thing to our students and to a teacher. Very simple. We are proud of you. And we're proud of our parents and we're proud of all the people that poured support, wives, supporters, parents into these people so that they, they would be here tonight and do the amazing, incredible, incredible things that they've done. So without further ado, let me turn it over. Can you put your hands together for Ann Lopez Caniva? She's going to open up the meeting and then it's going to go over to Dr. John Green. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. All right. Thank you everyone for coming here tonight. Just wanted to start, do I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting? All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Lewandowski. Roll call. Yes. All right, and if anyone would like to stand please, and we're going to do our pledge of allegiance. And if Mr. Don Mcillop, if he would lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I'll just pass it over to Mr. Don Greenham.
Thank you and good evening. My name is John Greenham, principal at East Campus. A very large majority of the resolutions that we do before our board meeting begins is, really is for our students, and that is why we are here tonight. However, we are going to begin this evening with a resolution for one of our very own teachers who actually won an award, a Teacher of the Year Award. And that is a representative from our physical education department, Mr. Don Mcillop. This resolution is recognizing Mr. Donald Mcillop, 2023 Illinois High School and College Driver Education Association Teacher of the Year Award. Whereas Lockport Township High School Physical Education Teacher, Donald Mcillop, was selected as the 2023 Illinois High School and College Driver Education Association Teacher of the Year Award. And whereas Donald Mcillop was chosen from a select group of talented Illinois driver education teachers because of his teaching, learning leadership, his abilities in teaching teenagers to drive, and ability to motivate young drivers to be effective and safe was highlighted in his nomination for the award. Whereas Donald Mcillop has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, and community by achieving the respected status. Now therefore be a result by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 20th day of March 2023. Congratulations, Mr. Mcillop. One of the, obviously it's very, very cool for Mr. Mcillop to be honored with this great award. It's also pretty extra special that this is Mr. Mcillop's last year as a teacher as he's retiring at the end of the year. So congratulations and thank you, Don Mcillop. Now at this time, I'd like to introduce to you our athletic director, Mr. Michael Dewire.
Thank you, again honored. Thank you, school board and administration, honored to be here again this evening to recognize some of the accomplishments of our student athletes. A very special group tonight, second consecutive year for this group and this program to place third in the state of Illinois in team wrestling. This group truly embodied what we try to teach here, you know, not only accountability and, and character, but really facing adversity, week in and week out. Each and every one of these young men faced some adversity this year and just rose above and continued to shine. So it gives me great pleasure and honor to read this resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School Boys Wrestling Team. Jed Alwawi. I got you this, I got it this year, right? Chase Creed. Logan Kaminski. Max Anizovich. Jake Pratt. Christopher Miller. Carlos Munoz Flores. Aiden Nolting. Timothy O'Connor. Peyton Roberson. Mason Russell. Malik Salah. Tyler Sefsek. Drew Silzer. Anthony Sutton. Logan Swah. Durango Vales. Dominic Vukovratovic. Robert Vukovratovic. Justin Wardlow. Liam Zimmerman. And Isaac Zimmerman. Coaches Jameson Oster. And Josh Zimmerman. Josh Oster, Dave Mackey, A- Asaf, Rob Melgoza, Doug Chesna, and James Ramne, Ramsey, Ramne also coached this team. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Boys Wrestling competed in the IHSA State Finals on February 28th, 2023 at the Grosinger Motor Arena in Bloomington, Illinois. And whereas Lockport Township High School Wrestling Team placed third in the state competition. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the LTHS Boys Wrestling Team is hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and communities. And that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, on this day, the 20th day of March 2023. Congratulations. Couple more for athletics, very excited to also announce a couple more for some individual state medalists. This resolution is going to recognize the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Boys Wrestling and our first ever Girls Wrestling state medalists. Whereas Lockport Township High School Boys and Girls competed in the IHSA State Competition at Grosinger Motor Arena in Bloomington, Illinois. Lockport Township High School Senior Logan Swah, freshman Justin Wardlow, and freshman Claudia Heaney, who's not here this evening, all placed second at the IHSA State Wrestling Competition. Yeah, Coach Roth is accepting on behalf of Claudia. Whereas Lockport Township High School recognizes Coach Oster, Coach Zimmerman, Coach Roth, Coach Fuentes, and their success at Lockport Township High School District 205 student athletes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Logan, Justin, and Claudia hereby be recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and community. And that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, on this 20th day of March 2023. Congratulations. I don't have, I missed the paper here. Also would like to recognize Logan Kaminski for his sixth place medal. Sorry, Logan, come on up here. Logan's also a senior.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented? All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Ives and second by Mr. Lewandowski. All in favor? Aye. All right, well, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you. Congratulations to all of our students and as Dr. McBride said, excellence. We always want to recognize those students that have done so well in our school, in the community. And to you parents, I also congratulate you too for this outstanding, you know, for all these achievements that your son has done. Thank you. At this moment, we're going to take a little recess, all right? So, and we're heading back into our porter room for our business. But thank you, thank you for all coming and good evening.
I never took it lightly. I took everything seriously. There's a lot of work in serving on the school board. It's not just what you see in the meetings. But, you know, you've got a great team here. The administration's been here for many, many years. I won't give you your total years, Tony. I'll skip over that for you. But Tony, Bill, Steph, Laurie, Jeanette, the two Angelas and everything. I guess it's two of them. So you're fantastic. You do a great job. And every time I call, I mean, you know, I'm sure Stephanie's not going to be disappointed with my, missing my calls and insurance inquiries and some stuff like that. You know, John Greenan, well, Dr. Greenan now. It was John when I first met you. You carry as well. You know, thank you for everything you guys have done. Told myself I wasn't going to lose it. Yeah. And Kathy, oh my God, you know, will be less titles for you now because every time I call up and, "Do you handle these things?" And you go, "Yeah, I can now." And she'll add another title there. But the administration, you guys are fantastic. The school is so lucky to have such high-quality people that we have here. You know, when I was seated on the board, I knew we'd soon begin a search for a new superintendent. LTHS is a great story to tell, and the board began looking for a new leader, you know, to change the culture, brand, and future objectives of LTHS. And I couldn't, I personally, on behalf of myself, our selection, Bob, I think we got it right with you. I know, we don't always agree on things. You and I don't always agree on things as well. But I just thank you for your stewardship, your leadership, and your friendship to my board colleagues. I've known many of you long before I was on the board. I've known Mike for quite some time. But there's a lot of work being on the board, and what you see here in the monthly meetings is just, you know, is just a tip of the iceberg because there's a lot that goes on behind that because we, you know, we take resolute in our responsibilities. Everyone seriously acts on their responsibilities and acts together. As a board, we don't always agree. You know, there are times, you know, that we've had long discussions, but we go with what the majority says and we act accordingly based on the board. When I was preparing, when I told Bob I just want to, you know, have a few comments, I was reflecting on my board, my board colleagues and my relationships. And I was, and I'd think about you guys, and then I'd come up with various things, you know. Mike, you know, community volunteer and longevity, 20, how many years you been on the board? 20-something, you know. And everybody, and what makes this board work, in my opinion, and it will, you know, in the future with the new colleagues that you're gonna get, is that everyone brings something else to the table. Luann, you know, the curriculum and this, you know, you're always, you know, the students make sure that, you know, any particular thing comes up and you always have a good reminder. You know, unfortunately, Michael Travis isn't here, but if talk about tradition, his father, Charlie, was on our board for over 30 years, then Della, his mother. So he, I put, you know, I wrote him down as just a tradition. You know, Zion, you're the newest board member we've had. You've been, you've been two years. It was a learning experience, I know for you, when you first joined us. It's still gonna, it's still going to be, but...
It's still a learning experience.
But you're getting it. You're getting it, and I just encourage you to keep up the good work. Veronica, you know, one of the things with, you know, Dr. Shaw, she's a parent, she's a teacher, she's a dean, she's an administrator, she's a college professor. So she brings her wisdom from all different aspects of it. So I think that, you know, that's great. And, you know, Anne, I've known you through Rotary, through your husband, through several other things long before the school board. But you, one thing, you've got a compassion and you're committed to your leadership here. I know Zion, Veronica, Anne, and Mike, you all went to Lockport High School, didn't you? Sorry, Luann, you and I, you and I didn't.
My daughter did.
Oh, your daughter?
Well, I grew up.
My daughter did too.
I grew up.
But, you know, you know, to the past and present students, you know, thank you for making LTHS what it is, what it's currently been, what it will become. It's with great pride to be able to, you know, see the success on the, I mean, I enjoy what happened down the hall there a couple minutes ago more than me having to talk up here. But the successes on the field, on the courts, the stage, the bowling lanes, in the pool, the classroom. I wear my porter gear with great pride. And who knew in South Carolina, how many people live in Naperville because I run into them and they go, "Is that Lockport, Illinois?" And I said, "Yes, it is." But just, you know, Bill, you know, the comments, Bill, we get on the facilities, you know, these, all these people that visit and come from other, other schools. It's, you know, the top 10% dinner. If you ever get a chance to go to that, that's an impressive evening and where, where they're all going. You know, and, you know, and to our community in general, they, you know, they, they supported me and I tried to support them. You know, the last few years have been some unprecedented challenges, and we, you know, we did our best to do what's, keep it safe and healthy. I understand there's always difference of opinions. We don't always agree. The community doesn't always agree. But I think at the end of the day, if you really take a step back, we all try and do what's best for everyone concerned. And I, you know, that seems to be a nice trend going forward, you know, so, you know, hope that continues. When I decided, Mike Petty, who was on the board for many years, when he decided to step down, I, I applied for the position and the board was nice enough to accept me. You know, I said, "Okay, I can bring my business and my finance background and things like that with management and staffing." And I figured, you know, you know, that will help and that will bring a lot, but I, you know, I didn't, I didn't count on learning as much as I did. And, you know, I got, I definitely got more out of it than I put in. So, thank you.
We had children happy, but we'll skip those.
You know, we opened up your folder, folks. That's a tough act to, you know, you asked that, you know, each board meeting, on December 5th, we did our board self-evaluation. You asked that in each meeting, we just review some of our protocols, and it seems pertinent tonight since Mrs. Castillo will do the annual public relations report. Just to look at six, seven, and eight. Now, I'll just read them, and we've got a long agenda. We'll get into them. You know, the first is use of electronic communication. And just for members of the public and members of the board, just a good reminder that our electronic communications are subject to Freedom of Information Act. It's important that we remember that, Open Meetings Act. We strive as, as board members to avoid reply-all, having any kind of meeting online. And we operate on the protocol that when we communicate, if one board member has requested me for information, all board members receive that electronically. Also, the board has a protocol for electronic communication that either the, generally the superintendent, your wish is that the superintendent responds on your behalf or the board president. Social media, you'll hear a lot about social media. A few things that we decided at our self-evaluation is that, you know, we just wrote board members recognize that while we might be giving our individual opinion or stating a fact on social media, any, anything we say or do on social media, especially in the era that we live in, can impact the whole board. In promoting official district business and activities, personal use of social media should be limited to sharing links related to, directly to district media platforms. Using those platforms, the ones that Mrs. Castillo will, will talk about as those official channels. And then just, you know, you asked this, this piece, board members will not post rebuttals, responses, corrections to district-related social media. We hope we vetted that, and if we put it in accuracy, I hope my phone rings and you tell me to fix that because that would be something I would do immediately. And then finally, just eight, number eight, request for information. And that's just the, the protocol that we've established that when one board member requests information, everybody gets it. And that, you know, just always monitoring board member requests. The way that we wrote it is that one person's request for information does not divert an inappropriate amount of time from staff efforts to achieve district goals. So just thinking about the information requests and how they can be lengthy in terms of time, how they could distract from other goals, things like that. I don't know if there's any discussion. You just asked me to kind of read those and review those. Those are probably some of the most important, the communication piece, because it's all about communication, really, and being transparent in communication.
All right. Okay, before we go on, I just wanted to, first of all, thank you, Dick, for your kind words and for what you spoke about. I know it gets very moving, and I know I probably will break down when I finally do decide to leave, but it is, it's, um, on behalf of the board, I mean, I can, you know, speak for you, but yes, I'm so glad that, you know, you got on the board with us and it was just at the right moment, you know, in hiring our superintendent. But we've gone through some tough challenges, you know, way back. But yes, I know that we've always done it in the, in the goodwill of the students and stuff. And I always tell everyone, it's just to keep thinking about the students and what's, you know, what's best for them. But yes, I thank you for all your years of service, and I know we will miss you, especially for a lot. All right. Thank you.
And just a quick add-in, you know, you sort of criticize yourself for your questions. You know, what I would say is that, you know, if you're a teacher and you have, someone asks really good questions, you become a better teacher. And I think all of my colleagues behind me would agree, you ask good questions. So you've made us better in answering those questions, and that, that's really what the ultimate, you know, role of a board member, you know, an elected official representing the community, volunteer, you know, extraordinaire, asking good questions because it sharpens the focus. It makes us better at what we do. So appreciate that. No apologies for asking good questions.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Foundation report.
Good evening, and I too would like to extend a gratitude to Dick. He served on the foundation board for many years. That's when I first met him. And he was liaison to the foundation through the board, and I will miss working with him and sharing all of the, the good stuff that we get to do and, and his insight. So thank you for, from, from the LTHS Foundation Board. So real quick, Cassidonite was a great community event. I personally feel incredibly proud that we have a community so willing to support the foundation and the work that the school does. Cassidonite, Taste of Lockport, what else? All the different events that we do, the golf outing. We have an incredible amount of support from the community, the businesses. It feel, it just, it feels really great to be a part of, and I love hosting these events to show and, and give us all an opportunity to celebrate kind of just being together in community. So I was happy to do it, and we're excited to do it again next year. And to piggyback on what the students had said for scholarships, the foundation scholarship deadline is approaching April 3rd. So that's coming fast and furious. We have moved to the digital like they had said. And I will say, what, being able to type in requirements or just, like, the kids just put, like, searching scholarships and School Links already, like, populates what they would qualify for. So I also will tout the fact that School Links has made some great changes to scholarships and how kids are going to approach. And I just wanted to highlight what is in that report was, I did a quick search on the scholarships that are in School Links through either LTHS or the foundation. There's 106 of them that we personally have a relationship with, and that means $360,000 in opportunities every year for our students. So School Links doesn't kind of show you that easily, but there are 106 different local, regional opportunities for Lockport students to apply for. That doesn't count national and whatever else School Links puts in. Those are the ones that we are in charge of. So I was really excited to read that, wanted to share that with you. So there are literally hundreds of scholarships that the kids can search out. They don't even really have to search them out. They just have to click that they're interested, populates for them, computers do amazing things by remembering who they are. So it, I'm excited for what School Links can do for the students and help them on their future. The foundation is looking to support our students in various ways. Veronica was kind enough to attend our last meeting, and we sort of talked about how we might be able to support some of our Willco students while they're here. We're still kind of going to talk about how to navigate that, but that's exciting for me. I like the idea of trying to also use foundation money to support students while they're learning their trades, while they're in school with us here and not, not just, you know, we spend the largest amount of our money on scholarships, which is amazing. But I'd love to be able to balance that out with supporting the students while they're still in our class, still in our, in our school. The new foundation website is up and running. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the LTHS page, you'll see there's this beautiful logo. If you click on it, that's the new foundation website where you'll see we have entered in all of the sponsors and everything. There's 46 different companies that have helped us in the last 12 months, and you can see all of them listed there. Wednesday, June 28th, is the 24th annual golf outing for the foundation. So 24 years they, we've been having a golf outing. We're going to be hosting it at Prairie Bluff again. And I, we're working on finding catering for that right now, but that's the day, so you can mark your calendars. And then our next foundation board meeting happens to be April 4th at 4:00 right here in this room. I run a tight meeting, it's an hour long. If you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer. Well, thank you. Thanks again to you.
Thank you.
Legislative report.
Legislative report. It's a long list, and I do not plan on doing a, a reading of all of the bills that are either in House or Senate committee. I did put a note whether or not they passed out of committee in, in making their way to the floor. For the public and for board members, this is the season where the legislator convened in the Senate and in the House committees. Those committees generate legislation. Some make it to the floor, some do not make it to the floor. There are a number there, and like I said, I don't plan on going over all of them. Eventually, these bills, if they do make it to the floor and they're voted on, as you know, we would then receive policy, how we fold that in. And just in time, I know the board members have gone two months now without policy. Press 111 is on my desk, so we'll get that ready for you in the next couple of months. Few that we're looking at, minimum employer salary. We're looking at that. Stephanie Kroy has already reported to the business organization I as well that we report to, but this would raise at schools in that, in effect, a minimum hourly rate of $20 and then scaffolding up to 21 to 22. What would the financial impact be? Also, you can see a few, a couple others that I want to spotlight, Drug and Education and Youth Overdose Prevention Act. That is an act to intensify the commitment to educating youth about the perils specifically of opioids. I want to credit Dr. Angela Hunting, who has really led the charge for us to have Narcan widely available, both for the public in the case that we ever had a student on our buses, in our school buildings. Narcan is an opioid inhibitor and can prevent death from opioid overdose. So we have done training. We've enrolled a number of different people in looking to roll that out. Continued focus in the state on mental health, and mental health days both for staff and, in this particular case, for students. In essence, what this enrolls is mental health days. There's only a few reasons why students can be excused from compulsory school, religious observation, medical reason, funeral, appearance in court, for example. This intensifies adding mental health. You see a number of different things in these bills that really are all reducing tenure, substitutes. All are related to trying to address the teacher shortage that is occurring across the state and also nationwide. Opening up licensure, making it easier for retirees, reducing tenure from four years to achieving tenure to three years. Addition of Native American history as compulsory in the mandated units of study that we have to study. Some work on Open Meetings Act and school boards. This would allow school boards a new reason to have an open meetings, closed session. You know, board members have to be very specific about why we're in closed session. This would add the ability to discuss, for example, no trespass letters in closed session. It's a reason to do that in closed session. At this time, it's, it would be in an open session. You can see a few things, dress code, interestingly enough, requiring a screening for cardiac arrest early in the year. We participated with Midwest Health. It's been doing that for 25 years. I shared with board members. My brother is in cardiopulmonary work at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia in just the long term. 25, 30 years that students, as they grow, can be victims of hypertrophic cardiomyopathy, which is the rhythms of the heart, electrical, as my brother would say. And this screening has happened, you know, Midwest Health has led it, Young Hearts for Life, and looking at that. This bill, the maintain an opioid antagonist, Lockport Township High School could say check. We're already doing that. And then some intensification of what we have to do with bullying. All going on, all coming out of committee right now. So, so look for more. Any questions about legislation that's, that's going on?
All right. Thank you.
You want me to just run public comments?
Sure.
Yeah, we did not, you know, the board has asked me to do responses to public comment. Last month, we did not have any public comment, but, interesting fact, I texted board members earlier today. I did a number of candidates running for election. Will County on Friday released our tax rates. An important thing to remember, important thing for the public to remember, is you approved a levy in December. The levy is the aggregate amount that you're going to ask to raise from the total community. And that's the tax amount from $3 billion worth of property. So it's not distributed the same to every single property on there. The tax rate is actually what, what impacts an individual taxpayer. Mr. Lewandowski, his house, the tax rate is really what determines, based on the value of his home. Our tax rate, as we predicted in the levy process, dropped. So if you look at our audit from 2012 till now, we've had a steady decline in our tax rate, and it continues to go down. I think when we do some comparison study, we will, again, probably the lowest tax rate of 17-area public high school districts. Credit a lot of that work to Stephanie Kroy and the work of her office and the good financial work just to keep that tax rate going down. But as people know, property values continue to go up, which is what you want if you're a homeowner. So when that tax rate's applied, that will determine the value of your home. If your home's going up, even a lower tax rate doesn't mean that it's not going to increase your taxes. Just an interesting thing that we found. Much like with board candidates, as the board knows, if one or two candidates asks for information, like our published tax rate, all board candidates get that information. So just an interesting piece.
Public comments. All right. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30, available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of, a lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. This time, we have Ms. Tammy Hayes.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Tammy Hayes. I've spoken here before. Basically, I have a few questions from the February school board meeting. And since I re-watched it online, I can give you the time, the timestamp. At 38 minutes, 22 seconds into the board meeting, Dr. McBride discussed luncheons or breakfasts that he would be having with other superintendents and their board presidents. And how these meetings that they would discuss, I can only assume, would be the goings-on of their schools and their districts. And, and that these meetings would not fall under the Open Meetings Act. They would not fall under that act because there wouldn't be enough of the board members at these meetings because it's only one superintendent and their board president. I'm bringing this to the attention of everyone because I think it needs to be brought to attention. As making that comment that you will not be under the Meetings Act just seems suspicious. And even when Mr. Navarro said that he would be happy to go to these, you declined. That being said, I'm sure that Dr. McBride will be calling me later in this week to discuss what I have spoken to at this meeting. And that brings me to my next thing. And I'd like to bring people's attention to the February meeting timestamp 39 minutes and 38 seconds. The speaking with one voice, agreements that you all have made during your self-evaluations that you would be responding to any emails through Dr. McBride. So here is my question, my highlight, if you will, of this situation. Seeing as that every single one of you went through a school board election and your constituents put you in these seats that you sit in now. My question to you is, when a public person has a question for a school board member and/or the school board at large, and they email you, how is it that you're allowing one person to have your voice? Because I do not believe that you will have the time in the amount of hours that it takes Dr. McBride to call someone or email them. There's no way that you all could have sat in a meeting. So at that timestamp, Luann Johnson made sure to, made sure to announce that it's very confusing for the public. Well, I think the public needs to be aware that you're all speaking through Mr. McBride. And are you, are you meeting when, when there's an email, when there's a question to the board? Who, the public elected you to these seats. If the public has a question, are you not required, at least somewhat morally, to make sure that you are understanding what the public has to ask you? At this time, I just would like to make sure that it's understood that when you hear these comments from last, last month's meeting, it brings up a lot of questions. And I hope that you're all doing your due diligence as you're, as elected board members, to hear public comment, to respond to public comment, whether it be email, voice, voicemails, or through a parent coming into the school and wanting to speak to someone. But I, I hope that you're all doing your due diligence because you were elected here. You were not, you were not hired here, and you, as board members, are letting someone who is hired, can be hired and fired by you with a vested interest in their job to speak for you. And I don't think that that's what, when people elected you, that's what they wanted. Thank you for your time.
All right. Go on, communications. We have none. That's the only one. Yes, that is the only one. All right. Communication, we have none. Freedom of information requests, we had two of them, if you can see there on your agenda there. Okay, we're going on to, then, to the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 27, 2022 regular board meeting minutes and the February 27, 2023 closed session minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those minutes? None. Row call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Alex?
Epstein.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, we have none of the board expenses. All right. On, going on to the treasurer's report before we get that approved, we're going to have Ms. Stephanie Kroy go over her report.
Good evening. So the treasurer's report is the same, the same information that you guys receive every month. And as you'll see in the cash flow, we're continuing to spend the tax money that was collected in the fall. So if you look at the difference between what we've collected in revenue on the revenue report and the expenditure report, we've spent $9 million more than we've collected at this point of the year, which is normal, right? Because we collect everything in the fall and then spend it. We won't collect more property taxes till May because we just got the rates, then there's a process of all the bills going out and all that. So we won't collect any of that money till May, so this, these reports are through February, so we're still going to have March, and we're going to still have April. So we'll continue to have expenditures greater than revenue for the next few months. And that's just the way that the, the cash collection cycle goes, right? So I just want to point that out. The other piece of information I want to point out is, I'm expecting, Dr. McBride and I spoke about updating the five-year financial forecast, and that will be coming, it probably won't be coming until after the, the new board is seated, which seems to make the most sense. So we'll probably, we're, we're kind of projecting having that ready in May. And then on the two items that are still sitting there, waiting for more paperwork and, which will be coming. On the activity bus leases, I spoke to the vendor today that we process those leases with, Midwest Transit. We expect to have lease paperwork in April or May as well. So in the, in the coming months, you'll see that leased too. The laptop lease will probably be coming around the same time. So those are coming. The thing that is no longer in this section will be on an agenda item in the future, in, later in the, in the meeting tonight. The bus bid is now on the agenda for approval in the action consideration. So that is no longer as part of the treasurer's report. Does anybody have any questions about these standard reports that we give you every month?
I have a question on those laptops. Do you anticipate being a shortage on them?
I don't think so.
No. Supply chains on things like laptops has come under control. And the, we have some currently that we're demoing to make sure that the ones we want to purchase, and their teachers are evaluating them to make sure they're up to their needs. And those came within a week or two upon ordering them. So there was, we aren't worried anymore.
And we do have these, we, we, the vendor that we use to lease these also works with us on the swap-out, right? Like, the teachers will still have their existing laptops until we get the new ones in. So then we pass those back to the vendor that we lease them through. Okay?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the, the, it would be the February, I'm sorry, right, the February 2023 treasurer's report?
Some of them.
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Lewandowski. All right, if there's no questions, we will have a roll call. Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes.
We have our superintendent update.
All right. Well, tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing a number of individuals who are going to be presenting for us. Before I do that, just a couple of acknowledgements. I do want to acknowledge Dr. Lori Cristofaro. We might have to have a board resolution. State Treasurer Mike Frerix annually does a women's history luncheon, selects, I believe, seven, eight women in different areas of accomplishment, the arts, business, sports. And our very own Dr. Lori Cristofaro was selected as the woman leader in education in the state of Illinois, and was honored last week. So congratulations to Dr. Cristofaro. We also want to give a shout out, future assistant principal, Jason Osball, who you appointed last month. Today is Mr. Jason Osball, but we're hoping maybe at this time tomorrow night, he'll be Dr. Jason Osball. He'll be defending his dissertation tomorrow, which is, which is a big deal. And then also our celebrations committee, we have a celebrations committee, it's part of our climate and culture, just doing some good things this week to, to really energize people going into spring break. Please root in Porter Madness, which is a final four of free throws. Our very own Dr. John Green is representing, so the big man apparently can shoot. So congratulations, we're going to be cheering on Dr. Green and, and, and that little, little, little bit of school fun, which is so important to have. Tonight, we are going to hear from Jeanette Castillo. She is going to do our annual public relations report, along with Mr. Eric Slager. So I'm going to turn it over to her in a moment. And then kind of previewing things, we have some of our partners from Sitco, North America, and Mr. Kevin Conway, who are going to do a presentation about launching a Sitco Innovation Academy here in Lockport Township High School District, specifically at Central. So we'll, we'll start with Mrs. Castillo, I'll get her report up, and then we'll move into our friends from Sitco.
Good evening, buenas noches. I'm here joined with Mr. Eric Slager, who's our webmaster and videographer here for the district. So over a year, last year, you heard our annual communications report. And really, with the upcoming, this school year, what we did for the public relations department is being a little bit more intentional, right? With language being purposeful, what does our communication sound like, feel like? And what does that mean for our students, staff, and stakeholders? So with that, I think I'll open up with a short pop quiz to our board members of, do you happen to know the top three preferred languages from parents?
Spanish, Polish, English.
That's what I guess.
Okay. And we can reverse that, so the top is English, second is Spanish, and after that is Polish. So with that, just with language, you know, being more purposeful. In the beginning of the school year, what we noticed through Parentsware tool is the preference for parents, right? What their language preference is. And with that, partnering with the principals, with Dr. Green and Dr. Green, their Sunday messages. How can we be able to leverage our communication during, even if it's for the Friday message, especially for the Sunday message, translating that from English to Spanish to Polish? And that's with the help of Parentsware. We would hope to be able to, you know, extend the other languages that parents do prefer to receive their communication. So little by little, what we've done is really kicking off the school year by being able to extend tools, being able for them to receive the communications in their preferred language. So that was right at the beginning of the school year, and that's something that parents have really enjoyed, being able to see that we're really extending those communication tools and their preference for that. Also, during the summer, what we've done is branding, right? With the minivans, I don't know if you've noticed, some smaller white minivans around campus, or just traveling on the roads with some field trips. What you see on the further right is branding, right? It still had that gold-yellow background, really working with the Department of Transportation, with the director, branding, and making sure that our branding and our logo is up to par. And right when we kicked off in mid-August for the school year is welcoming our new staff. So with that, again, it's being purposeful, mindful, taking account of language, being able to meet our new staff members and interview them for videos, being able to highlight them on social media, and also show that video during, you know, in, in the beginning with all Teacher Appreciation Day, or even just showing those videos to our staff as well. And what we also have noticed during the time that we were looking for candidates for the AP position that we just recently talked about, is there were a total of 36 applications. And from those total 36 applications, we noticed that a couple of candidates said, oh, the first thing, how we found out about the opening of the positions is through social media. And it's inevitable that a lot of us go through finding our information on social media or on our website, or just a quick Google search, right? So it's quite interesting that, you know, everyone is still going on social media to be able to find the first information there.
Now is a Google search a separate category than a social media?
It is. So for example, going back to using the example of the AP candidates, what they shared and expressed is that they found the position through social media. And one of them is Facebook.
That's really interesting that social media beat out like a Google search.
And I guess at the end, it's really personal preference, right? For now, do you have any questions before I, I continue?
It's Facebook, not LinkedIn, not like any of the more professional social medias? It was Facebook that was the most common? Did you say?
Facebook is one of the three that is most commonly used. I mean, as far as the school district's social media pages that we have, is Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We do also have a LinkedIn account, which I believe our personal department manages that. So in mid-August, another project that we partnered up with is the foundation with Young Hearts for Life. That I think we were just fully involved and so excited to be able to share an opportunity, right? Just furthermore opportunities to be able to leverage our communication. And with that, I am proudly to share that we produced and executed a Spanish-speaking video utilizing whom? It's our students. And that's where you really captivate the audience, is by using the student's voice and using their preferred language, right? Really tapping into that language that perhaps we haven't done before. And especially partnering with that, with an event like Young Hearts for Life, to be able to advocate and offer these echocardiogram screenings for young adults here for school. In the community of Spanish-speaking families, they don't really understand that. So how is it best that we can be able to leverage our communication? And that's through simply connecting with them. How? Language, right? So really using that language and using one of our seniors as a student voice, and being able to present that video in Spanish and in English as well. Anything that you'd like to share here?
Well, we can talk about, if you're done with that section, we can go into the app. Okay, so we recently launched the app, as you're all aware. And with that came a new website as well, which you've probably seen by now. And so over the course of a few weeks, we were able to migrate over manually 144 pages from our old website to the new one. And in addition to gaining the app from the new service, we get a bunch of other incredible features. We're more ADA compliant, we have responsive accessibility, meaning any size screen from your cell phone to your tablet to your desktop, the website's going to respond, it's going to look good, and it's all going to be ADA compliant, which is super important to us. And so just a little insight into that, so over the last 30 days of our new website, our homepage had saw 31,000 views. So 31,000 people hit that homepage. The two pages under that, the calendar had 12,000 views, and the staff directory, which is a relatively new addition on this new site, had 11,000 views. So that's 11,000 people in the last 30 days going to look at the staff directory and see those photos and those contact information. In terms of new users, in the last 30 days, we've seen 24,000 people hit lthf.org for the first time. And 14,000 of those were direct, so people who typed in lthf.org. 8,000 of those came from a Google search, so regardless of what they were searching, they ended up on our website. And 500 of those came straight from social media, so people clicking over from social media. So I think those, you know, those numbers are super interesting, because, you know, our website before was good, it served its purpose, but we're really moving forward now. We're moving forward into making sure it's accessible for everyone, the translations are readily available for anyone who may need that. And then so I'd like to kind of transition here into social media a little bit. You have two pages in that presentation here about social media, there's a bunch of numbers in there, but a couple that I want to point out specifically. We had 2,500 posts last, in the last 12 months, across Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And if you look at the individual statistics here, that's 100% increase from the year before, across all three. So we are posting more. And it's not just that we're posting more, it's that, as Jeanette said, we're being more intentional with what we're posting there as well. So a lot of what our old social media plan was, was informative, right? Spring break are these dates, here's where you can watch the graduation livestream. And what we're trying to do is move more into the people side of things, right? We want to see students, we want to see athletics and clubs, we want to celebrate the things that are happening around here. And so this is really encouraging, these numbers, to see that that approach is working. You can see all the, the green arrows there indicating that's upward trajectory from the year prior. In almost every single category here, things have been improved from the year before. And so I just wanted to point out, a lot of these say engagement and impressions. So just to break down what that is, an impression would be anytime any user was shown that post. So on Twitter, if it scrolled through somebody's Twitter feed or came across their Facebook, that counts as an impression. So you'll see on Twitter, on the following page, our most impressions were 24,000 people saw Dr. Greenan's photo on Twitter. So that was our most viewed post on Twitter. So on the flip side of that is engagement.
It also helps his followers.
Yeah. And engagement is anybody who actively reacts to a post, likes, retweets, shares, comments, anything like that. So an industry standard for engagement seems low, but is about 1 to 5%. So if you think about somebody like Coca-Cola, who might have 15 million Facebook followers, anytime they post something, only 1% to 5% of those people are actually responding, reacting, commenting. So you can see on Twitter there, we're right in that zone of about 5, 6%. But if you go up a page to Dr. McBride, our Facebook engagement is 38%, which is absolutely crazy. And I think there, you know, there's a lot of talk of less followers, more followers, how can we reach more people? But I think what this points to is that the people that we do have on Facebook, following us in social media, are particularly engaged. And so there's something to be said for that versus having 10,000 followers that don't look at your posts, that don't react to your posts. We have a, a community that's actively engaging with us. And so I think that speaks to the content that we're putting out as well. And so we're going to keep, you know, working through trial and error and figuring out how we can get these numbers up and, and main, get more followers while maintaining those high engagement and impression numbers. Are there any questions about the social media aspect of things?
General question is that these numbers are fantastic. I don't know a whole lot about social media, but the, the numbers all work. With such an increase in usage, and you talked about people going in and downloading things like that and putting photos and stuff, what protocol do we have in place to safeguard what goes on that site?
On social media?
Yeah.
So Jeanette can probably talk to this as well, but we do have any social media accounts that come out of the school, whether it be clubs or athletics, there is a process that they have to apply, and then that is monitored, just so that not anybody can create an account and say this is an official Lockport account. And that way too, if, if somebody leaves, they're not the only person with access to that account. And so we maintain those passwords and usernames as well.
Okay, thanks.
To say, to say that these are amazing is actually kind of an understatement, because I don't know if a lot of people knew, know this, but I actually took a class in college about like social media, like how to gain like marketing through social media. Like, these numbers are higher than any example I've ever seen. So that, that's like, to the point where like, this doesn't even like, look like an example. To have a 38.26 engagement is like, I've never heard of anything, I didn't even think that could be possible.
For sure.
Unless you have like, two followers.
Right. And I do think that, that speaks to our, our demographics as well. So Facebook tends to skew more towards parents and the community.
Yeah.
Twitter, we see a lot more professionals, you know, other professional teachers and administration from other schools, sharing our posts. And Instagram tends to be where more of our students are at. And so I think, you know, this new approach we've taken, where we're really highlighting students, we're highlighting accomplishments, that garners a lot of support from the parents in the community and on Facebook. And so I think that has a lot to do with why the Facebook engagement particularly is so high.
Like even the Instagram one, Instagram's engagement, if I remember correctly, is .5% to at most like 3 or 4%. So the fact that we're hitting 10%,
For sure.
That's, especially like since kids are harder to impress, that's just the, the thick of it, they're less likely to like, like, comment, or anything, like, you know, that's interesting, this is very, this is all very interesting.
I just interject for a moment, because they won't say this about themselves, but I think something that Mr. Slager said is important in referencing a strategy that I know Mrs. Castillo is using, coming out of, of, you know, TV production, for example, news story, you know? When we interviewed Mrs. Castillo, she wanted to be the chief reporter for the district. It really approaches her job that way. This was a very busy weekend for her, covering a lot of events. And the idea there is, all of us, you know, when you memorialize great things that people are doing, interesting things that people are doing, that creates for the whole community, especially the person who's doing it, a, a level of importance. It, it feels important, I'm doing something important. It, it's, it's posted, I'm Dr. Greenan, winning this award. But also, I think, just the very fine work, if we're looking at this presentation, the visuals matter. The design, the style, the font, the visual appeal can't be underestimated, and we're very lucky to have, you know, a staff that really, really understands that and has talents in those, those areas as well. So the visual appeal is very strong. I appreciate, like Mr. Slager said, that Facebook really is engaging people of my generation. It's not MySpace, okay? But then Twitter, for example, garners us a lot of professional and area interest, and then Instagram, obviously, a little bit more youth. So it's nice, nice company.
I almost want to say, like, don't change anything in like Facebook and Instagram, just keep maintaining. I almost want to say like, don't change anything in like Facebook and Instagram, just keep maintaining those numbers. Because like I said, those are really impressive.
And that's not to say that, you know, including in those numbers or not including in those numbers also dips into the fact that we've gone Facebook Live or on Instagram Live. So then what happens then? Well, you engage a little bit more with your users, right? The reshares, the followers, having events, being, you know, partnering with other departments. Just this past weekend, as Dr. McBride said, we had our return of the Latinx dance ballet at Central. And just having the students there and giving them that opportunity and being able to show those visuals, it really speaks volumes.
And, and before we leave this, we just had a conversation and asked board members, you know, these kind of numbers, we do this annually, this is easy to do weekly, this is easy to do quarterly or monthly. We don't have to decide right now. We certainly can share these numbers. And I, you know, I, I share information with you weekly, obviously monthly at a board meeting, quarterly. I would ask you to just think about what tempo, if you want, you know, not just annually. So I know you've got a little bit more to wrap up.
So just to wrap things up here on the last page, we're bringing it back home as far as, you know, all the work that we've done really brings back to our mission and our statement of why is it that we're doing what we're doing? It's for the students, it's to really showcase and highlight the best that we can, the district, right? And with all the many hours and, and the work that my team does, we were recognized with six statewide awards by the Illinois National Public Relations Association. And one of them is the Award of Excellence. As you can see, it's the Porter Prize Direct Mailing that we had this past summer. And the following five awards of merit, that was the Annual Communications Plan, What Makes You Proud to Be a Porter Video, Next Semester Summer Plans and Study Tips Video, What is a Porter, and the LTHS District 205 Website. So all the many things that we are looking forward to as we're wrapping up this school year and now planning to see what kind of submissions we can submit for this upcoming. So as you can see now there, and I was talking about events, right? Really being purposeful and mindful and just actually being within through the lens of the students, right? This was the first time that we had this past fall, the first Hispanic Heritage Concert. And again, it was just another opportunity of why not have a mariachi? And listen to that live, traditional Spanish music along with really celebrating our students' talent, staff, and everyone as a whole. And then recently, this past February, it was Black History Month. How are we celebrating it? And hopefully, we're not just celebrating every month, but perhaps we can just recognize it with a visit of the Jesse White tumblers, which we did. And we had, I don't know if you follow our pages, but one of our porters is a Tumblr. So we were so excited just to even have his family here on campus and being able to celebrate, you know, that as well. Anything else?
Questions, comments, things you would like to know more about? The third person in this mighty team is Deanna Gregorich, is also part of the team. She presented last year without getting Mr. Slager in as well at the table. He's a major component of what we do with Public Relations and connecting with people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Well, they don't need to be here, but I did want to, I asked my board, I think like it would be nice if we could also get something like more quarterly, but like a strategic quarterly, where we should definitely see one month after, like one month after kids come back from school, right before winter break, right before spring break, and either like right after prom or after graduation as the fourth thing. Because I think those are probably the times where it's going to, like, social media will spike and being able to see how our engagements and stuff like that, if you guys wanted to talk about possibly doing something like that, like quarterly. It's like this is, and from my understanding, getting these numbers aren't that difficult for you guys.
Yeah, we can absolutely pull that at any frequency you'd like, yeah.
And just as they depart, and we have Mr. Conway and our Sitco friends on up, the second one of my, my report, which is about the Sitco Innovation Academy. There is a memo in, it should be within materials, I mean, it outlines all the, the spring, just in-person engagement that we're hoping to do. Did a recent survey, and we found that in-person, right after email is the preferred way that people want to get information. So just, that's there for your, you know, just when you know that is. And obviously, every board member is, is more than welcome to come to those events. They will certainly introduce themselves, but what I'm bringing to you tonight is a Sitco Innovation Center. And really trying to think the board, about the board's goal of students being both college and career-ready. That, that career readiness, why I might go to school, what I'm going to do afterwards. Next year, the state of Illinois starts something very important. Freshmen next year are the first group of learners who by their senior year can what's called, get what's called a Career Pathways endorsement. If they have the right experiences through high school, we're proposing six different career pathways. And an innovation center at Central Campus would really bring that together. A corporate connection, we're asking for a board commitment. And we have some amazing innovative staff at Central. We have, every student passes through, for the most part, digital pathways. It's a great opportunity to orient students to what their future could be and get them thinking about things that they might want to do when they graduate as a porter that lines up with, with your goal. So I am very proud to introduce Shannon McCarry and Jen Hannan. They're going to introduce themselves and who they are. They're going to share with you, and I'll, I'll help out a little bit about what Sitco does with innovation centers. And then Kevin Conway is going to give you our concept here at Central Campus.
Thank you, Dr. McBride, and thank you so much for the opportunity to, for us to share this exciting initiative. We appreciate our past and current partnership with, with you and Dr. Laurie Cristofano. So thank you for that, and I appreciate your time tonight, Board. So again, my name is Shannon McCarry. I'm the General Manager of Government and Public Affairs at Sitco Petroleum, and I work out of our headquarters office in Houston, Texas.
My name's Jen Hannan. I'm the Community Relations Advisor, and I am your local liaison. I work at the Sitco Lamont Refinery.
And so I guess we'll go ahead and do our presentation, and then you, you can go on to the next step. Okay, so the next slide, please. So our Sitco Innovation Academies are part of our Sitco STEM Talent Pipeline. Next slide, please. We started the Sitco STEM Pipeline in 2016 as a way to encourage students to pursue STEM pathways, education and career pathways. So we're really trying to address the lack of talent coming into the pipeline, not only to our company, but also to our communities. We're really hoping to educate students so that they actually come back to our communities to live and work. Next. So our Sitco Innovation Academies have four legs. The largest one, the most important cornerstone of this program are the Sitco Innovation Academies themselves. And we have these Sitco Innovation Academies in the areas in which we have our operations. So we have academies in Houston, we have them in Lake Charles, Louisiana, Corpus Christi, Texas, and, and of course, here in Lamont. We, as part of the program, we use our employees to go out to our schools to make that career education connection with the students. So as an academy, we pay special attention to ensure that our employers go to our academies and, and work with our students. We also make available scholarships and grants only to our Sitco Innovation Academies. We do have, and Jen will tell you a little bit more about this, we have special scholarships for our graduating seniors and then specific opportunities and grants for the Sitco Innovation Academies. And then we're also just really hoping to, to increase this talent pool with a, with a T24 type of pipeline, technical school, two-year schools, four-year schools. We're not just here asking for people to support college-bound kids. We're really interested, because we want to hire technical sort of, sort of, technically certified students as well as the two years. So just as a, a quick recap of, of what our impact was last year, we reached nearly 18,000 students and educators. We have 13 academies, and some of the academies are individual campuses, and some of them are actually an entire school district. We, we awarded 61 scholarships, equalling to $122,000. And the program is almost a million dollars with 32 different partners.
So really, the key component of the STEM Talent Pipeline, like Shannon said, is the support of its Sitco Innovation Academies. We partner with local schools to support STEM programming, curriculum needs, professional development, and out, and outreach. And each academy really is tailored to fit their campus, their district. What do you need? We, partners are officially designated as Sitco Innovation Academies by their district. Tonight, we're here to present to you, the board. Like Shannon said, that our academies have access to our STEM Talent Pipeline resources, which would include scholarships. She gave you a brief overview, but you can see some of the school districts that we have. We have 13 Innovation Academies in six different school districts in three different states, including three here locally, all in Lamont. So we have one at Lamont High School, we have one at Old Quarry Middle School and Central School in Lamont-Bromberg Combined School District 113A. To become a Sitco Innovation Academy provides a couple of responsibilities from both parties. So as Sitco, our responsibilities including printing, providing financial support. This would be through our annual STEM grant process. We leverage partnerships to enhance STEM opportunities happening in your schools. Our volunteers will come if you have them for your career days, your STEM events. What could we do to come and bring our knowledgeable staff members to, you know, educate your, your kids and to show what they do for a living? We promote partnerships through social media and through our press releases, and we give priority access to scholarships for our academy graduates. Our school partners, you would officially use the name Sitco Innovation Academy at Lockport Township High School, and recognize that in through our press releases and media advisories associated with the program that Mr. Conway will, will present on. We recognize Sitco on promotional materials such as t-shirts and banners and cover the costs associated with signage. Reporting on the metrics, progress, and budget as outlined in the grant agreement that we do annually, that would be done with Shannon at the corporate level.
So let me tell you a little bit what this partnership is not about. We're not here to tell you how to hire your teachers, how to design your curriculum, how to, you know, do the STEM promotion in your schools or career development. We're here to support and help scaffold what you already are doing or what you want to do aspirationally. So this is a hands-off, we provide, we're a partnership. We provide financial assistance, and we leverage our partnerships with other nonprofits and, you know, work with our Sitco employees to come add and layer on different ways of, of I guess, adding color and, and wonderful things for the kids. So that being said, you know, we, we do support almost anything that you want, right? So this is a discussion between the, the school and Sitco. We will be able to support field trips, equipment, substitutes, PD, anything of that sort. So there's really a lot on the table out there, but it should really be tailored towards STEM education.
Becoming a Sitco Innovation Academy allows Lockport Township High School a variety of partnerships and program opportunities, such as our scholarships. You'll see here, last year, we presented 11 scholarships to Lamont High School seniors. In 2018, we established this program to assist students from select high schools who plan to continue their education and are pursuing a STEM major. If selected as a recipient, the student receives a one-time $2,000 scholarship up to 25 will be granted. Additional opportunities we've already mentioned would be as STEM ambassadors to bring our employees their knowledge and their passion for STEM to your students through hands-on activities, career fairs, mentorships. And another really fun thing, we have some pictures shown here, would be our National STEM Day. We celebrate National STEM Day on November 8. And partner academies are invited to participate in special hands-on events, field trips. We had a great STEM night at Lamont that we partnered with their feeder school district 113A, where we had, you know, over 500 people who came through the building to do hands-on activities. Some were done by students, some were done by our staff, but most of them were done by our community partners and community members. So with this, we talk a little bit about our social media accounts. We are on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, so there you go. We also would be providing a logo. So this logo is designed to be altered, to be based on your school name, your school colors. We would present, we would create those. We would also provide logo usage dos and don'ts to make it nice and easy. Anytime that we're promoting, we do have some certain guidelines, those would be provided to you. It's just to make sure that we are using all the proper terminology that all of our Sitco Innovation Academies across the country use. For example, that we use, ask, ask them to use hashtag Sitco Innovation Academy. Do not abbreviate to hashtag CIA. Sitco is excited to partner with Lockport Township High School, and we really are looking, value our partnership that we've had over the past few years, and we really look to grow those and continue that in, in this new and innovative way.
And certainly, if you have questions, you know, now's a good time to ask. But now Kevin Conway, who's our media specialist and more at Central Campus, is going to walk you through, he's representing a number of professionals at Central Campus who came together to think about how this partnership could actually work. One of the key cornerstones is partnership with industry. Mrs. Hannan and I sit on TRAP, Three Rivers Educational Partnership. We were just with manufacturers last week, trying to think through, how can we give students exposure, like Shannon said, four-year college, two-year college, technical degree, to what is around them in terms of industry? These are excellent-paying jobs in every level. And so partnership is something that the career pathway experience, your board goal, really calls for to help students understand. I shared last week, our students will go to hundreds of hours of college visits, but rarely visit a, a, a site. We have one of the most important sites right down the road here in Pandoit. And so really, we're in a, a very, you know, amazing area of innovation and manufacturing, but I think most of our students might not even know that. So, Mr. Conway, and you tell me when you want me to, to move your slides forward, right?
Well, first, thank you so much for having me. We're all really excited about this, as Dr. McBride mentioned. There is a team involved here, so I am just part of that team. Since this opportunity came to our attention, we've been talking about all the different possibilities and...
So I'd like to mention first, yes, we have several teachers already involved. Mr. Corey Juzan, Project Lead the Way Teacher of the Year. Also, STEM teacher, robotics teacher, and my partner, Dan Mostyn for the Robotics Club. We've been discussing all kinds of different possibilities here. And today, I just kind of want to present a few options for how we can take this concept of the Innovation Academy and kind of try and turn it into a reality with our classes and our curriculum. And as Dr. McBride said, digital pathways is going to be kind of our focus to start. So yeah, our mission here, obviously, students first always. And we really think that our relationship with Sitco can help us achieve those college and career readiness goals by providing this technology, tooling, instruction to all of our students, supporting as they develop an innovation mindset, and that's really important for us. As a result, we're also going to have to be innovative in the way that we teach this and, and make those connections. So we're really excited about that. We want to increase access to learning for every single student. So this isn't just for the engineering students, this is to expose all of our students to this. And we think that we have a really great opportunity at the Central Campus. And of course, we want to support our teachers as they can interact with this Innovation Academy to expand assessments, to try different things and be kind of experimental. We can go to the next slide here, yeah. So we wanted to make sure we did some background. So we went and visited Lamont, who, they've been working with Sitco for a really long time, and they were super welcoming, very, very helpful. We think as we go forward here, they're going to be a really great resource for us. We saw a student-centered approach to all of this, which is super important for us. The department collaboration included science, tech, English, history, so it was across the board. Excellent resources, 3D printers, large format printers. Excellent resources, 3D printers, large-format printers for green screen rooms, for production, project-based learning, creativity, and innovation. So all these things that we're trying to support in our students as they grow in their STEM education, we think our partnership with Sitco is really going to help with that. So the big thing that I wanted to talk about today is this idea of opportunity and access. So having a Sitco Innovation Academy, a space, a maker space, spaces, is an opportunity. But really, we want to focus on this access part, and that really means instruction. So we could have a space with a bunch of equipment and everything, but what good is a 3D printer if no one knows how to use it? So that's really what we've been kind of talking about, is how do we get all of our students to learn those skills? So this is kind of where we've started, and this is kind of like our nucleus here. We'll expand that vision a little further later, but right now, we're thinking digital pathways. This is an area where all of our students are in at the freshman center, and we think this is a really great way, it has kind of like a natural connection, because we have all of these courses. And the ones in maroon here, Family and Consumer Science, Digital Pathways Tech, Business and Art, those are quarterly classes, and all of our students rotate each quarter. We also have Digital Pathways AP Computer Science and Project Lead the Way. Those are year-long classes, and we think they'll interact with this, too. The following slide here, if we want to... There we go. This is just an example. This is a sketch. There's a lot of work to do. But we wanted to illustrate a way that we think that we can use this right away. And this is going to involve different classes, so I'm just going to focus on those quarterly classes. So let's say it's the first quarter. I'm a student in Family and Consumer Science. I want to make a ship of knowledge cookie, all right? And so now I've presented the need. We see Sitco Innovation Academy right in the center here. So I want to make a ship of knowledge cookie, but I don't have the tools necessarily. I also think that's a pretty good idea, and some people might want to buy it, so I'm going to go to business. And I'm going to say, hey, business, we have this idea. Business can create a supply order, a product schedule, a marketing strategy. And then business can go to tech and say, hey, FACS has this really great idea, but they need the tools. So then tech will then go to the Sitco Innovation Academy. They will design cookie cutters, molds, to get that ship of knowledge logo on a cookie. And then art will design logos, packaging, posters, advertising. And media production here is where the art students and the business students can then create commercials for the products. They can create radio spots, podcasts, and they can actually produce those materials. One of the things that we really want to see is students walking out of the Sitco Innovation Academy, holding their learning and seeing it and feeling it, or in this case, eating. So the cool thing about this idea, and again, it's just an idea right now, is those... I'm sorry, if we could just go back really quick. Since it's quarterly, when those students go from FACS to business, second quarter, they're going to do that project again from a different angle. And then tech, different angle. Art, different angle. So they're rotating through that Sitco Innovation Academy all the time. So again, that's just where we want to start, where we think this could really be powerful and open up that access for all of our students. Okay, go ahead, Dr. McBride. This is where we want, we know we can expand, right? This isn't just for digital pathways. We think all of our classes can connect to this. Why can't science come in and 3D model a cell for their cell unit with all the different pieces? Social studies, English, doing video essays, podcasts, all kinds of different things. Okay, if we want to go to the next one? And this is where we kind of pan, and we zoom out a little bit, and we can see how we can connect all those major departments to the Sitco Innovation Academy, but also connect to our extracurriculars. We have a robotics student here, and I presented this idea to them as we were practicing one day. And I asked him, well, how would you feel about an open-access maker space? And the first thing he said was, well, that sounds like really cool, but is there a way we could connect it to the community? And the robotics students always really impressed me, but I was super impressed by this idea, because I think that's really important here. We can go community-wide with this. Once we have experience with it, we have curricular connections, then our students can become experts with the materials. They can bring in local library groups, businesses, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. We could have all kinds of really interesting projects that we could do collaborating with that community. So that's kind of like the overall large vision of it, where we're doing things on a curricular level with those classes and extracurricular level and a community level. And then, of course, this would be open, so students can work on projects independently. They want to make a gift for their family. They can produce ornaments. They can shoot video, build to their heart's content. And we want to give them that freedom and that space after they've had that instruction, because we think overall, that's really going to help them achieve those college and career readiness goals. So the opportunity of the physical spaces, the resources that Sitco is really going to help us with, all these different things that we envision in the Innovation Academy. And the access comes from our human resources, which we have many in place, our teachers, our curriculum, our instruction, extracurricular opportunities, and community outreach. These are the major things that we see. And it's been a pleasure working with all these very innovative teachers as we've kind of been thinking about all these different ideas, and we know that one idea is going to lead to the next. That's what innovation is all about, and we're excited to help our students achieve that as well. Yes?
So when you say this is something the community can get involved to, are you also saying that the community can also use these maker spaces?
That's one end goal that we're really hoping for.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when you say something that you can use right away, are we looking at a implementation like next school year or...?
We would be looking at implementation, starting with the Sitco grant process, this process, to go through all the things that Shannon and Jen shared to be an innovation center. And then we would start sort of in a grant cycle over the summer, you know, using grant funds, pulling some of these curricular pieces. You can probably see that there's a Sitco piece, and then there's a great deal of us in there, too. So this would start, what I'd be asking to vote on tonight, would start this year, this fall. Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
So this is at the Central Campus, right?
Yes.
So I'm a freshman, and I go through this, and I'm all excited, and I want to get to the next level. Now I'm at a sophomore at East. So how do I continue my learning? Because this really has sparked my interest.
Yes, so one of the things about the infrastructure of the digital pathways, those exploratory classes, is that, oh, you're getting exposed to those ideas so you can take those electives going forward. But also, you can come back to Central Campus and use the Sitco Innovation Academy, because we want to keep that open. So those extracurricular connections, I think, are really going to help with this. Right now, I sponsor a club called Club Create, where we're making some of this stuff already, and I think this would just help really expand that, and we're getting students coming back from the East Campus.
There's also Mrs. Johnson's school counseling piece here, where we have six different pathways, and starting early, freshman year, illuminating the students, here are the courses that you could take to build that pathway. So be more intentional, more directional about that sort of glide path than, you know, here's our course catalog, you pick. So really teasing out from freshman year on, what kind of career path do you want to explore? Because it's actually a good outcome if someone says, oh, I'm going to be an engineer, that they arrive and their senior is saying, I'm not going to be, I don't want to be an engineer, before they go off to a technical school, a community college, or a four-year college, and they invest time, treasure into something that they realize in college they don't really want to do. Conversely, if they really do want to do that, they're even more prepared.
I also do have, like, is there possibly a... Because I was talking to one of my friends about, like, if we could also expose some of the students to some of the more, like, craft stuff, like medieval crafts, like glassmaking or like leather making. I don't know if that would even be something that doesn't necessarily...
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, I think the Innovation Academy is kind of open for us to kind of explore all kinds of different ideas.
That would be...
Space is always an issue.
Space is always an issue, but there's also the idea of, like, maybe we can even, like, rotate some stuff throughout.
Right, space is an issue at Central. We sort of, I was showing Shannon and Jen, we do have sort of a space that implies almost a school within a school. That might get the, the last part of my board report, which is just updating you very quickly about Central Campus and opportunities there. And then also, you know, quite a bit of what we do is right down the hallway here at East Campus as well. I think it is creating a platform that students carry on.
So what happens to the space that we have in East Campus?
Well, just kind of give you a really quick update, and I'll kind of wrap my superintendent report up. In the past month, since we last met, we're continuing exploring renovation of Central, talking to our architects. Did a substantial visit to West Chicago High School, Glenbard West, Downers North, Downers South, all places that have done amazing renovations on vintage buildings. As I reminded the board, renovation is a less costly expense than new construction, which is the most costly thing that a school in a tax-paying community can engage in. So there could be some reconceiving of space at Central that would be more supportive. You know, there's two issues really at Central that we've talked about. One, just the need to update mechanicals behind the wall, but also need to modernize learning spaces to support this kind of, you know, 2023 learning if we're having seven feeder districts come into Central. So there's two dual needs there at that facility. And so exploring that and bringing to the board more and more of what we've learned, what we've seen, which would involve, could involve, you know, perhaps even a better space than the spaces that we have now. Wait, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for being here and travel.
Information reports.
Yep. And as this team comes on up, we want to do, annually, we bring the board, another thing that you'll be approving is the staffing plan for next year. And Mr. Kandari is going to walk you through where that staffing plan is. This is something that you annually approve. But giving you just a little bit of background to what we've been working on with staffing, what we're recommending, and why we are recommending it.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to spend a few minutes tonight going over the staffing plan. I wanted to give you a summary of what the process is, of how we decide what the needs of the district are to request to the board. Dr. Christopher is here. She's going to talk a little bit about academics as well. Dr. Huntington is going to talk a little bit about student services needs. Then I'm just going to give some wrap-up about general notes and information, and then some historical data and financial data that Mrs. Crune and I had put together. So the staffing is obviously a process, and it goes on for a long time. We actually started this process for this current school year about a year and a half ago, when we sit down and we look at, what are the trends? What are the needs that we have? Each year, January, February, the guidance counselors, the guidance department sits down with each student. They go through what classes are available, what classes they may be interested in, what classes do we still have available, which ones do we not? After the students decide on what classes they'd like to take, that information from guidance department goes to Dr. Webb Ray, Mr. Sermon, the building principals. They kind of look over things. We then come together as an administrative team, and we have these huge spreadsheets that Dr. Webb Ray puts together. They're this big for each department. They're huge. And we sit down and we go through, what size are the classes we need to have? How many of this class do we need? How many math teachers do we need? How many social studies teachers do we need? How many English teachers? And we go through that over the course of about another week and a half to plow through. In February, this past February, I did address the board with our human resources goal, and then we posted some of our anticipated positions, what we are pretty sure we're going to need, but we posted them anticipated, not knowing for sure until we wanted to present that to the board this evening before we start with the hiring process, the hiring season, okay? Occasionally, you may hear us drop back into educator E's, which is some acronyms and things like that. So if you do hear us say these things, just wanted to make sure you understood. If we say FTEs, Full-Time Teaching Equivalent, in my mind, those are people. Those are bodies. Those are people that we have to hire, okay? I call them souls. People laugh at me, but those are the souls. Those are the people we have to have in the building for teaching. You may hear me say a PAL. That's a professional... Oh, okay. You may hear me say PAL, which is a professional educator license. That's what every administrator, every teacher in the state of Illinois has, okay? That allows us to be employed in a school district. You may hear us use the phrase multi-endorse teachers, okay? That means those teachers that may not only be endorsed in English, but may also have social studies, or maybe, in one case, special education with a certain science, okay? Physics and chemistry, okay? Multi-endorsed people. And we use the word sectioning quite a bit, and for the most part, that's the process of when the students choose their class, the classes they want to take, and our ability as a district to offer and staff those courses, okay, to staff those classes. It also includes collective bargaining agreement obligations. Department chairs, they teach X number of classes, and they also have time to perform one of the most important jobs that they have is staff evaluation, okay? So that's how we do sectioning. So I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Christopher, who's going to talk just a little bit on math and science.
So one of the areas you're going to see a little bit of growth in this year is math and science, and it goes directly to the PLUS program supports we put in place. Last year, we came here, we requested this from you. You gave it to us, and actually, at our last, not our last one, November Curriculum Committee meeting, we gave an extensive report on this process. So just a reminder, what is the PLUS? So you know, the state of Illinois passed rigorous accountability for college and career readiness, and we, our students can meet those accountability by taking Math 1, Math 2, Math 3, and then also going Biology, Chemistry, Physics. And so by going to Biology, Chemistry, Physics, we're also starting to meet their goal of two lab sciences. And also, we know when students meet that and take three years of science, they have greater opportunity of success on things like the SAT test. So there's multiple reasons that that is a good goal. So the PLUS classes, students take one of the corresponding classes, and then when they're struggling with a concept or a skill, their teacher recommends that opposite their lunch, they go in and get some additional reteaching of that skill. And then they're in there usually for about two weeks. And then the teacher of the PLUS section determines when they should exit. So right now, Dr. McBride is showing you some data, because this is what we shared with the Curriculum Committee, that we followed this data very closely. And so you can see for IM 2 and IM 3, you can see what... And so you can see for IM two and IM three, um, you can see what was the enrollment. We selected, actually, Dr. Genwa Bray selected twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, because that was kind of the last time we had a quote-unquote "normal" first semester to compare with this year. So what do the numbers look like? And you can see by having plus in place, our failures, which grades are one measure that we use to monitor success, dropped by like two-thirds. So, um, we thought that was a great success. Um, the next slide, the data looks a little bit different. This is science. So in science, you have to remember, we're moving students up in, from integrated science, more students taking chemistry, a lab-based science, and again, moving more students up into physics. So you're going to see a change in enrollment numbers between, um, the semesters. You can see the percentage is what is really clear here. You go from fifty-six percent to sixty-eight percent of the ju- of sophomores taking chemistry. So you see a slight uptick, maybe in the Fs, which were one measure, but also we have more students that have access to that science class as well. So you can go to the next slide, I think, Dr. McBride. So what do we see when we looked over plus data holistically? Sooner, sophomores and juniors were able to access the support, get additional help, and then roll out of it. And actually, most students who got the support were scheduled one time to get the extra help. We saw all demographics being served. That means boys and girls, all races, also socioeconomic status. And because it's skill-based, all A's, some A students went in there, B students, C students, D students, and some students who did receive Fs. Some students who did not get into plus, it was because of their lunch period. And so we now think the program is successful. Um, we've seen some strides, and Ms. Johnson, Dr. Shaw could talk about our presentation. We're really, this provided students with a lot of confidence, um, that we would like to have it available all lunch periods. And so then the next slide after this just really talks about some upgrowth in horticulture and landscaping and science as well. Again, that's meeting that board goal one with dual credit.
And then also, um, on the next slide, um, social studies, world languages and cultures, couple changes, couple fluctuations in certain classes, uh, there as well. So, um, Dr. Huntington, I, I asked Dr. Huntington to talk just for a few minutes about, uh, student services overview?
Absolutely. So we, um, uh, I'm going to take the win for the district and have hired teachers that have had multi-endorsed, um, areas. Two of those teachers, one is in American Sign Language. She can teach special ed and American Sign Language. The other is a teacher who can teach, um, special education, EL, as well as horticulture. So, because of the unique needs of those programs and those departments, we're, we're stealing some special ed teachers out of special education and moving them into other, um, areas to support those areas. Um, and so we're looking to have to replace that FTE, or those souls, right? Um, in that area. And then also, um, we have seen an increase in the number of students in our modified program. If you recall, the modified program, they're for students with, um, uh, intellectual disabilities and, and more needs. And by Illinois School Code, we're required to have those classes be in smaller class size. So when you, um, you know, you, a program grows by eight kids, you think, oh, it's eight kids. That's a whole other teacher. So we have seen a growth in that program as well. Uh, as far as bilingual services and ELL services, we had a whole presentation at, at our last curriculum meeting about our growth in this program. As you can see, in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we had sixty students, and now we have a hundred and eighteen students. So because of the, um, increase in the number of students, we are utilizing, um, more needs, um, in that program to support the, our English language learners. And finally, in our nursing program, um, we have, uh, one school-certified nurse, right? So that's, that's the person that has to do all the reports, all the, um, histories, and, uh, attend all the five oh four meetings and IEP meetings for anybody with a medical need. Right now, we have about seven hundred and eighty-five students with either an IEP or a five oh four. Not all of those students have medical needs, but they all get a reevaluation, or there's evaluations as part of that. And so, um, our one certified school nurse is being stretched exceptionally thin. Um, and so, um, making a recommendation that, um, we have four, uh, registered nurses, that we convert one of those registered nurses' positions into another, uh, certified school nurse position in order to ensure that we have coverage, um, in both buildings, so we can meet the educational and medical needs of students at both campuses.
And one of the registered nurses is currently in a program, and I think takes the test, uh, week, two weeks through Thursday. So that, that may be something we'll come back to the board, uh, later, later on to say, we really need to move this, um, registered nurse into the, um, certified school nurse. So overall, so overall, with the sections that, that we've looked at and, and, and the folks, not going to go into, you know, so many specific sections. Basically, what we're looking at, uh, from this year into next year is three, three additional FTE. And the next slide, Dr. McBride, shows we will have a decrease, uh, by one position in social studies, um, which we, we won't have to fill, and then we'll, we will, uh, need to increase one math stu- one math teacher, and then two, uh, special education teachers, um, and one, um, world languages and cultures teacher. And that's, that's a, a plus three when you don't, don't, uh, have to replace social studies. And again, the nurse, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to him, we'll, we'll discuss that. Just a few other quick notes, um, as we go forward. We do have, uh, as I mentioned last month, five teachers retiring this year. Twenty-two other teachers are in the retirement queue through twenty twenty-seven, which puts us again right around the ten percent, uh, turnover mark. We, we do have several teacher resignations and leave of absences, uh, that, that have already, uh, come in for next year. Other things we, we look at, we definitely look at, at trends in student, uh, enrollment. If you remember, Jerry McKibben was here about a year, a little over a year ago, talked about, um, uh, trends, about, he, he talked about a lot of things. We also talked about, um, students', uh, enrollment trends. And in my, my, uh, action item, uh, he was within six students for this year. So he was really, really close with his, his, his recommendation. So he's, he's, he's right on. One more, uh, point of note, of course, financial considerations. We always look to, um, to try to be as fiscally responsible as possible when we're, we're hiring. So for, and, and it's not just, Tony comes and says, hey, let's hire all these teachers. It's not just Lori saying, hey, let's hire five more math teachers. We go through a long process, and we, we discussed this quite a bit. We were, um, meeting today with the, the principals and assistant principals and department chairs and talking about, here's what we're expecting to be open for next year. Here's what we're expecting from department chairs, administrators, to be looking at as we're, we're, we're hiring in the, uh, in the future. I included a few recent examples from, from recent years, um, in here. For example, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we add, we had to add ten new full, full-time equivalents. Okay? Ten new souls. And by doing that, uh, the, the salary for what we, for the folks who were leaving, to the folks we replaced them with, was down about eighty-eight thousand dollars. So really looking at, at things fiscally. The next year, however, twenty twenty-one, um, we, we had, uh, had eight, about, it was eight and a half new full-time equivalents, but the cost was a lot more. And a lot of times, the cost is a lot more based on the position. That year, there were several positions, deans, uh, guidance counselors, um, social workers, who have to come in with a master's plus. Okay? So right off the bat, those positions, um, their salaries are going to be a little bit more than, um, a, a teacher straight out of college. Okay? And then for this current year, the, the difference was minimal. We added seven new FTE, and it was a four-thousand-dollar difference. So again, a lot of it depends on the year, a lot of it depends on the position, um, that we need. We always take that into account. We, we look at that. Department chairs are always in, in contact with my office, with the, the principals, and we're always looking at who we can bring in and who we, who we can hire. So, um, my, my, uh, recommendation when we get to that point, um, in the action items, is to approve the, the staffing items as, as presented. Does anyone have any questions in general about anything that, that any of the three of us talked about?
One position does not need a replacement. Are you talking about the one, like, uh, it says right there, one position does not need a replacement?
That's the social studies position. There were fewer class requests for certain social studies classes. So the need was, we didn't need to replace, um, a teacher who was resigned.
Okay, understandable.
I thought there was a teacher shortage in Illinois. Are we being?
There is a teacher shortage in Illinois.
So, we were extra proactive to get ahead of it, so what?
We, we, um, are, are very lucky in, in that we, we posted positions anticipated early on. So we've had a really good response to folks who have been applying to our anticipated spots. Doesn't mean it's going to be easy, no. I was at a, um, with, with Mrs. Castillo at a, a recruitment fair on, on Saturday, and it was not well-attended by, by sta- by teachers. And so, um, I was speaking to one of my counterparts from Morton High School, um, over in, uh, Cicero-Burwyn. They need sixteen bilingual staff members. And last, last he told me was they're planning a trip to go to Puerto Rico. So, to try and find these teachers, so.
Nine is, it is highly competitive. You know, all high school districts, not so mu- much K through twelve districts right now that we compete with for high school teachers. The high school districts are all right now doing the same thing, approving staffing and then getting into the hunt, um, for the best teachers.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much.
You're just going to stay.
Slide over once, yeah. You are.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to go ahead and start where, uh, we spent our curriculum meeting, uh, part of it, discussing our English language learner task force. And so I wanted to make sure that, um, we gave you information about what we're doing in that regard. So we started our school year not knowing that we were going to have an increase in students with English language needs. But we started this task force anyway, because we were looking at our English language learners and how we can better support them in order to help them acquire English as a second language. Um, and then they just started to come, and we opened our doors, because that's what we have to do. And so we started the year with four, um, students who would be considered newcomers. Those would be students that had very limited English proficiency. And by the end of February, we were at twelve students who were new to this country or considered newcomers. Plus, we had three other students who were new to the country but had a little bit more English proficiency. So that's a tremendous growth in, in that population. And so, um, the benefit of having the task force up and running, um, and going, was we were able to work very closely to identify needs and come up with a solution and problem solve as we were moving along. Um, part of that committee is myself, Dr. Christopher, Dr. Webb Ray, as well as our new bilingual school psychologist, uh, Gabby Garbe, um, our EL teachers, Janice Partikel, as well as Andrea, uh, Cantineras. I'm sorry, I'm terrible with names, and I've also congested. Um, and then, uh, Ann Lee, our foreign lang- or World Languages Department Chair. And so we've been working, uh, we meet every two weeks, and we identify students and supports and needs. We've been utilizing our, um, instructional coaches to support our general ed teachers, who, um, have had, um, to really kind of move and shake and, and do, um, modifications and accommodations for those students as well. The good news is, our students, uh, from other lands feel very welcomed at Lockport. Uh, they are very socially engaged. They're a social group of kids. Uh, and we've been, um, really lucky to, um, foster that, uh, acceptance and, uh, their participation in our programs and services here so far. Any questions about the task force? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So as we sit down on behalf of John and I, Dick, we want to say thank you to you for your continual support of us as an administration, and for always being there to support and to celebrate our students, um, for many years. So we're going to miss you. We wish you all the best in happiness and in health. So thank you. As you look through our report, um, and as you heard tonight, we celebrated the last of our winter sports with wrestling and their accomplishments. And for the spring sports, we're really just hoping that the weather will hold off, and we can get as many games in as possible. And it's looking like it's going to rain for the next, um, couple days and on and off here, so we're hoping to get some games in. Um, as far as activities, um, we've had so many great concerts taking place, but really want to highlight, as you saw, our Sitco Innovation, um, conversation today. You know, Kevin Conway has done an amazing job with Club Create, which is very tied to, you know, our STEM courses in the, uh, STEM areas. And on any given day, with just Club Create, he has between thirty and fifty kids show up at Central Campus and just want to do amazing things, you know, and in his space. And then also, he's also a part of our robotics team, which, they are competing for the first time with Vex Robotics, and went to the competitions, and the kids were pretty nervous, and they excelled. You know, they competed at state and qualified for Worlds. So it's a true testament to the STEM area, what they're doing, and to people like Kevin, who are really passionate about helping kids find, you know, their niche and what connects them. So congratulations to them. Other big thing that we had take place last week was our St. Baldrex event. You know, the students that were here, they really did a phenomenal job in helping to make that something special for our Special Olympics basketball team. Even though we had to makeshift some things this year with that, it was phenomenal. They raised eighty-five hundred dollars, um, in shaving their heads. But it was a great event, um, that really connected our students and our staff. And our staff, thank you to Katie for the, the conversations that we have with the union, and to Kelly Featherling and Travanna Green, who have done awesome things in celebrating, keeping our staff engaged. And yes, Wednesday morning, the big guy over here is going to compete. He's one of the final four for the Porter March Madness, uh, shoot-off. But our staff is really doing some awesome things to, to stay motivated and keep our kids motivated as we head into spring break.
A couple other areas that I would like to highlight that we have upcoming, um, this month. Really, actually, one thing, major thing that we have upcoming this month, and it's something that I just want to touch on. Um, not to be too repetitive from what Mr. Kandari discussed, as well as Dr. Christopher and Dr. Huntington, but we are gearing up for interview season, no doubt. We, we spent a lot of time with, with Tony Kandari today, talking with other leaders, our assistant principals, our department chairs, about our process for going through several phases for candidates who are interested in the positions that, um, that we have open. So we're very much looking forward to that process. Hiring is one of the more important things that we do. Uh, we have been talking about wanting to bring, uh, more people, um, whether it be our staff, possibly some student voice as well, into the mix, in, into our different phases of interviewing. So that is something that is really going to be very time-consuming for us in this upcoming month of April, but we're very much looking forward to it as well. Yes.
Students are assisting you hire teachers?
We are talking about having a, a student voice in some situations regarding the hiring of teachers, yes.
That's really interesting.
So, we did that for our assistant principal opening. Um, we had several rounds, and in one of our panels that we did in the final round, we actually had two students, um, sit in and give us their feedback. So it was, it was a great experience. The students really enjoyed it, and it, it was great to have them give us some of their insight.
Now, are these seniors, or was it?
We did have two seniors.
Two seniors.
Yes.
I think it's important for us to keep an open mind and, um, regarding a diverse thought into our interviewing process. Of course, our administrative team, but also looking at different areas of our staff. Could be teachers, could be from our dean's office, our Guidance Department, um, and as well as student voice as well. So those are things that we have been actively talking. So those are things that we have been actively talking about, I would say now for the last couple of years, and we're excited about the process coming up in April. Carrie had touched on Kelly Featherling and Travanna Green. Big thank yous to them as they continue on their own to just volunteer to lead different types of climate and culture activities for our staff, which is so important. I also want to touch on something, the presentation that Ms. Jeanette Castillo and Mr. Eric Slager did. So much of what Carrie and I do in our positions, we have to have a little bit of knowledge about a little bit of everything. And so much of that relies on the collaboration with other leaders, our assistant principals, our department chairs, our directors. And what Ms. Castillo and Mr. Slager talked about today really kind of got me thinking about an area that really we want to give credit to Mr. Slager and Ms. Castillo for. Mr. Slager does so much for us in video production, such high quality, and he does it with a smile, and his services are requested quite often, actually, and he does such a fantastic job for us. But also, Ms. Castillo brought up a couple of areas where her leadership really was huge for us. As she mentioned at the beginning, now our Sunday messages, we're able to do those messages and be able to support those Spanish speakers and Polish speakers in our school community. And that was because of Jeanette's leadership. Parents' Square is a great tool to be able to have that, but you need a leader to be able to bring out those features. And working with Jeanette on that, we attribute the success of that to our partnership with Jeanette. And even mentioning the Jesse White tumblers that we had, that was also Jeanette's leadership in being able to really highlight Black History Month. So as they were presenting today, tonight, that was just something that I felt was a good area to spotlight. It's just one of the several areas that Carrie and I worked through with different people of our school district. Working with our team with Jeanette and Eric has really been great, and we can see just the great benefit of that in the data that they've provided. The last thing I need to say, Carrie already said it, but I have to say it to Dick Ives. As he was speaking this evening, it made me go to my phone to look back at the text messages that he sends. The last one that I received was in February that said, "Go Porter wrestlers." And it just reminded me of the great collaboration that we have had with Dick, his support, seeing him at events, receiving nice little text messages like that. You have been great to us. Personally, you have been. I thank you so much for welcoming me. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and then for, you also have the maintenance report there.
Two things real quickly. Overnight field trips, just always want board members to be aware. Winter Guard doing a great job. There's a number there. Just want to let you know, this weekend, off the record, I'm going to be going to that performance, looking forward to it. You know, this is not only Porter's traveling, the board should know, but it's also Porter's being invited to great things at places like Dayton, Ohio, large regional competitions, competitions in New York City. So Porter's on the move, you should know that. As always, Mr. Thompson has put together a great report. I think what he really highlights is energy, and energy might not be the most glamorous thing that we do, but one of the things that is delineated here is just all the efforts that we have to lower our energy costs, to bring those down, to be savvy, to be thoughtful about that, to use our credits to reduce what we're paying in electricity and natural gas. You can see all the things this month, from exhaust fans to whiteboards to air dampers to wrestling mats to ventilation in the Porter store. Any questions for me or Mr. Thompson on this month's maintenance report? We are ramping up. We have already started, just to remind you, next week, we will start roofing, and some of that product is already here. That's right above Mr. Dusterhoff's office. Obviously, a leak in our computer area would be catastrophic. So we are taking care of that area first, just over winter, over spring break.
Okay, next, moving on to our consent agenda items. All right, just need a motion for approval of our consent and agenda items, number two to number 14.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Moving on to our action considerations, approval of the SICCO Innovation Academy as presented.
So move.
And I can second that. Motion by Dr. Shaw, second by Lopez Caniva. Are there any questions? All right. On behalf of the board, just to, you know, giving them for their presentation for having them come here. All right, thank you. All right, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, next, I have a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 licensed personnel staffing.
So move.
Maybe I can second that also. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Then do I have a motion to approve the awarding of the bus bid for eight new school buses?
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions to that? Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. There is more policy consideration. Announcements.
Few announcements, just wanted to share last, you know, St. Patrick's Day, we had our Latin Act Dance, a great event. Tomorrow, IASB, thank you, has a number of things it recommends to do with board candidates, a board briefing, facility tours, if board candidates are so inclined to do that. Tomorrow, we made it open to board candidates to do a meet and greet, either online or in person, right here in the porter room or online, just with executive council members. Nine o'clock on Tuesday is our usual meeting, just to ask a little bit about what we do and how we do it. Obviously, we had our March 20th school board meeting. Spring break starts on Friday with an early dismissal. April 4th is a consolidated election. May 14th is the last day to seat a board, so I do want to remind the board, I would recommend in past years, you've done first of May, May 1st, Monday, May 1st, probably Ms. Lopez Caniva to seat the new board. I would recommend that date. Your next board meeting, April 17th, is not outside of the canvassing period. So you can't actually seat a board on April 17th when you meet next. So we have to find a special board meeting. I would recommend May 1st to keep it well away from May 14th. June 26th, last board meeting in June, that is because June 19th is a state holiday. Announcements.
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Pleasure working with you, Dick. Good night, Michael. Have a safe drive tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Pleasure working with you, Dick. Good night, Michael. Have a safe drive tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Pleasure working with you, Dick. Good night, Michael. Have a safe drive tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Pleasure working with you, Dick. Good night, Michael. Have a safe drive tomorrow.
Thank you. All right. Then do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Pleasure working with you, Dick. Good night, Michael. Have a safe drive tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?